I'm going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order and we'll start off with the adoption of various minutes, please.
Also move the adoption of the regular special meeting September 14th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the council committee minutes of September 14th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the minutes of regular council land use September 14th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And minutes be adopted from the public hearing of September 14th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And I would ask for council's endorsement of moving forward corporate report number R 193, which is a funding request for the Sarah McLachlan School of Music here in Surrey. We have staff and I'd like to deal with that so that they could then not spend the entire evening with us.
I'll move that.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. So dealing with that, please. Can I have a motion?
I'll move the recommendation on the report for the request for funding of the Sarah McLachlan School of Music.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Thank you very much for attending from our, thank you. Moving in, Madam Clerk, to the delegation and the public hearing portion of the meeting. Bylaw number one. Oh, no, we have first of all a delegation presentation by the B C Association Aboriginal Friendship Centre and Paul Lissert, the Executive Director. Mr. Lissert. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, your worship and council members. Like to beg your indulgence and acknowledge the territories that we're in and introduce yourselves, myself, in my own First Nations language for the record. Paul Lissert Satni, Mark Spa, Marilyn Slu, Nasal Dea, Hatian Sophie Keratlu, Keratlu Alu, Sagana Alach, Samasiu, and Jan Yankaktine Keo. Today's soon Zin Snatcha, Injan Kwantlin, Semiamu, Han Masquim, Han Sleva Tu, Keo. Just wanted to thank and acknowledge the traditional holders of this territory and acknowledge each of you brothers and sisters on the council for taking a few minutes to consider this very important opportunity. And it's my pleasure to speak in support of the recommendation to adopt and support the Surrey Urban Aboriginal Social Innovation Strategy. I just wanted to provide a few comments in support of the strategy and to, I guess, to share a little bit about the need statement. And I know that this is a very familiar space for many of you. And to share a little bit about the context for Indigenous people that have come into your community, many of them migrating here from Vancouver, from other parts of British Columbia, and parts of Canada, coming from an incredible legacy of pain, trauma, poverty, very much flowing from five generations of the residential school experience. We have at this time an unprecedented parallel between need and opportunity here for your governing council to move into this space in a good way. The opportunity in Surrey here is to build on the capacity of Indigenous community service agencies. Unlike the city of Vancouver, Surrey is struggling with an absence of Indigenous social service organizations. In the city of Vancouver, 28 Aboriginal service agencies here in Surrey, four. And I just wanted to speak to for a minute why it is so critical for the capacity of the Aboriginal community to be supported and why it's so important for the city of Surrey to move into this space in a spirit of reconciliation. And so the ailment that Indigenous people are struggling with is the impact of colonization, the residential school system, and racism. And there is a medicine for that ailment and the medicine is Indigenous culture in the broadest sense possible, our languages, our songs, our ceremonies. And there's a proportional relationship, I believe, between the degree of cultural integrity and the potency of that medicine. And cultural integrity really is going to flow from Indigenous agencies that are supported, endorsed, where there's a deep level of participation by our elders. I see my brother Thomas here and others, June, that can really inform an approach that's safe for our people, that is going to have, you know, a measurable material impact on the social and well-being, social and economic well-being of Aboriginal people. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission, as you see in the documents, has just produced a report containing 94 recommendations informed by the stories, many of them for the first time, shared by 7,000 residential school survivors. I am very privileged to work in partnership with former National Chief Sean Atleo as co-chair for Reconciliation Canada, and we have had the privilege of presenting at the Union of B C Municipalities Convention for the last two years. And just a note about the principles that we're encouraging for municipal governments, ones of dignity, hope, openness, and courage. A couple of quotes from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission calls to action. The first is to call on all levels of government, municipal, federal, and provincial, to endorse the U N Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which is recommendation number 43. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission recommendation number 57 is to call on federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal governments to provide education to public servants on the history of Aboriginal peoples, including the history and legacy of residential schools, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, treaties and Aboriginal rights, Indigenous law, and Aboriginal Crown relations. And this will require significant resources, time, energy, and commitment. And Reconciliation Canada and our Friendship Centre here in Surrey are two ready, willing, and capable partners to participate in that effort. Recommendation number 77 calls on federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal governments to identify community archives and work collaboratively with the National Centre for Truth and Reconciliation to identify and collect copies of all records relevant to the history and legacy of the residential school system and to provide these to the National Centre for Truth and Reconciliation. Just a few examples before I wrap up of municipal reconciliation in action. And there are a number of municipal governments throughout British Columbia who have fully embraced this agenda and have made similar commitments to the one that you're being petitioned to support this evening. The first is in North Vancouver, their public library. They took a truth and reconciliation pledge and it's a pledge to read project. And to date, there are 107 pledges to read and they have committed to an evening in honor of reconciliation event and 60 community members attended their evening event. Very powerful. In the city of Vancouver, of course, there is significant activity that has taken place. There is an Urban Aboriginal Peoples Advisory Committee and through significant relationship building exercise that resulted in the city of Vancouver declaring one year the city of Vancouver as a city of reconciliation and of course convening a walk of some 70,000 people, Walk for Reconciliation. Prince George, city councillor, who is the chair of the Aboriginal Peoples Working Group for the Union of B C Municipalities, led the development of a strategy in Prince George to rename Fort George Park, slightly to name Memorial Park. And as an act of reconciliation, the council in Prince George voted eight to one in favor of renaming that park. The new name aims to acknowledge the history of the land where the park is situated. In 1913, their village, the traditional village of the people, the Tlatlihten people, was burned in order to make way for the railway and the city. This was a significant opportunity in that community to recognize that we want a better future than the past that we've had and the way for us to do that is to move forward together under these principles of dignity, hope, openness, and courage. I really appreciate your time this evening and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lissert, for your presentation this evening. We will, after this, moving into corporate reports, be dealing with that strategy and its intention is to increase participation within the economy and within the education system as well as to promote healthy individuals, family, and youth. So I certainly appreciate you coming out this evening and presenting to us. Thank you. I have a couple of speakers. Councillor LeFrank.
Mayor Hepner. I really want to thank you, Paul, for coming out today and speaking so elegantly about the truth and reconciliation. I walked in the reconciliation walk two years ago now, just slightly over two years ago, and it was deeply moving. And I think this is a really important project for the city of Surrey. And we have a young and growing Aboriginal population. In fact, we have the highest number of Aboriginal kids in our school district. And we know that in B C Aboriginal kids are twice as likely to be poor and, you know, we should all be shocked by that. We need to ensure that these young people have the best opportunity to succeed. And the work of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada really inspired me to assume a leadership role. And I'd really like to thank Councillor Villanue for her leadership on the Social Policy and Advisory Committee and Mayor Hepner for her leadership in really encouraging us to move forward. The story of residential school survivors has, it's just heartbreaking and the legacy of unresolved trauma is passed from generation to generation. I grew up in Haida Gwaii and my kids in my school talked about that and it was who escaped it, not who actually went there. And I think that's really important. I just want to draw your attention to something that the report also states. Collective efforts from all people are necessary to revitalize the relationship between Aboriginal people and Canadian society. Reconciliation is the goal and it will make for a better, stronger Canada. And this was the inspiration for our project. At the U B C M this week, there was some conversation about the truth and reconciliation was not just about making recommendations but also about taking action. And this is really about taking action and taking it very seriously. And it's hoped that the process of developing the Surrey Urban Aboriginal Social Innovation Strategy will strengthen the relationship between the city and the Aboriginal community here in Surrey. I also want to note that it will be led by the Aboriginal community in Surrey and I want to also honor the Leadership Committee for being here today to participate and also to acknowledge Michelle Guerin and Sheldon Tetrel, who Sheldon's not here tonight, but they are the consultants who will be working with us to work on this strategy. And then finally, I'd like to thank the B C Association of Aboriginal Friendship Centres for your trust in awarding us the urban partnership funding and I'm really looking forward to this project. I'm very proud to be hosting it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor LeFrank. Councillor Steele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add to this that Surrey is actively involved and we care very deeply about what's happening. I've been working closely with the reconciliation from the standpoint, I chair the Aboriginal Relations Committee for Metro Vancouver and also sit with Murray Kraus on the U B C M Committee. And so we're working very hard. I just signed on today, actually, for my first course in government relations with First Nations, so I'm anxiously awaiting my first session in order to pass and get this certificate. The work is much needed and I really welcome it in to Surrey. Councillor LeFrank and I have been talking about this quite often and we are paths crossed that we're doing some of the same stuff. I also am the local government representative at the K T Treaty Table. And having sat there too and sitting there, I have learned a great deal and it's been quite a journey and I continue on it. So the city of Surrey, I just feel that you need to know, is very, very involved in all of these issues and we hope to make a success of everything that's happening. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Steele. And I want to thank you, councillors, for calling it the Innovation Strategy for Aboriginal because I'm passionate about social innovation and I think this is an opportunity where Surrey's going to shine as we develop that strategy. So, Madam Clerk, I'll move into the public hearing portion of the evening and if I could have number one, please.
First bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18513, all 148 residential lots between 126 A Street and 128th Street and 14th Avenue and the south side of 16th Avenue, not including 1577 and from 1593 to 1599 128th Street. This amendment will support the proposed rezoning from single-family residential to comprehensive development, which will reduce the maximum size and height of homes permitted on lots in Quome Point Park neighborhood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have four persons not wishing to speak in support of this bylaw and four persons wishing to speak. Mary Annella Martinez, first up. Doesn't wish to speak? Okay. Stephen Marsden, not speaking. Okay, these are the four not wishing to speak. I have three people wishing to speak. Good evening, Don.
It's Dan Spragons.
Dan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city councillors. I became the spokesperson for our hastily put together neighborhood committee sometime back in late April, mostly out of default, I think, but nevertheless, I've been the chief letter writer and public communicator for our group. Tonight, I'll only make a couple of brief comments as there are others here from our committee and the neighborhood who are anxious to express their passion, which we all share as to why we want to see this bylaw enacted. Before I carry on with my remarks, I would just like to say each member of our committee had something unique to bring to the table, but we are especially grateful to Brad Martin of Treeline Construction, who's not only a recognized quality home builder, but we are lucky enough to have him in our neighborhood. He provided all the technical outline you see in our proposal for a fair and equitable building allowances. So my personal mission here tonight is to thank the city for giving its citizens the right to make these types of changes in their neighborhood environment where the will exist. From the very beginning, we were warmly received by city staff representatives at the Planning and Development Department, chiefly Don Loomis and Fei Wong, who gave considerable time and energy in helping us craft a comprehensive development zone proposal that was fitting for our neighborhood. I also want to give a shout out to Judy Vilnov, who was always encouraging and supportive of our efforts. So I know you are familiar with the finer details of our CD proposal. I only wish to reiterate that our proposal was kept very modest, leaving plenty of room for current or future property owners to be creative when either renovating an existing home or building a new house. Hopefully, in the process of creating a CD zone, we have also created a legacy for keeping Quome Point Park neighborhood, a truly unique and interesting part of Ocean Park in Surrey. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor Hepner and council members. I am here to speak in support of the proposed rezoning of Quome Point Park neighborhood. I feel very strongly that our neighborhood is under threat due to fast-paced development of oversized houses and the clear cutting of our mature evergreen tree canopy. I do not believe that this unchecked development is in the best interest of our neighborhood. This has been shown by our neighborhood petition and subsequent survey. Our neighborhood has always been viewed as a park-like setting on the edge of the ocean with abundance of birds and wildlife. I first realized this 28 years ago when my husband and I bought our first home in the It was a beautiful 600-square-foot cabin in the trees, originally built for holiday and summer in Surrey. We were blessed to have raised our daughter in this special community and are now watching new generations of children play in our peaceful neighborhood. This is a place where on spring mornings, you wake up to hear eagles overhead where they are filling the sky and gliding over top the trees. At night, you can hear the owls calling to each other as the sun goes down. It is a joy for me to walk down the street and visit my neighbors along the way. We have worked very hard to stay in this neighborhood, always returning even after absences, twice due to work, has taken us overseas. This neighborhood is our home. I know that the city of Surrey recognizes the uniqueness of our area. The city has shown their support of our community through the creation of Quome Point Park and by guiding us through this process that has allowed us to express our thoughts and our concerns. I would like to commend the mayor, the council, and the city staff. Now more than ever, we need to stick closely to our community values and ensure that all voices are heard. We need to understand and protect our history, the precious value of our area's natural beauty, and ensure that we safeguard this environment for future generations. Again, I strongly support the proposed rezoning for Quome Point Park neighborhood. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Lauren. Next speaker, I have Anne Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm in favor of the Quome Point neighborhood proposal. When we first moved to Quome neighborhood, we, like many before us, came here because we were drawn by the natural beauty of the trees, the ability to live close to so much wildlife, and the proximity of great parks like the Quome Point Park. What we didn't count on was the wonderful sense of village community. People in our neighborhood watch out for one another. The only downside to this is it takes an hour to walk around your block because you have to stop and talk with your neighbors. Everyone should have such a problem. There is history in Quome Park as well. Originally a church camp and vacation properties for retired ministers of the church, when the camp went up for sale, the city, in recognizing the importance of the area both in natural beauty and historic significance, preserved the area as Quome Point Park. The rest of the area is mostly made up of small lots, 50 by 100, that were originally vacation properties for the church ministers. There's even one house today, still the original cottage, that a family uses as their vacation property. The roads are narrow, more laneways than actual roads, reflecting this heritage. Boundded by Quome Point Park and the south, 1,001 steps to the west, and the Ocean Park Community Hall in the northeast corner, this area is rich in historical significance. When we first saw the enormous houses going up and the enormous trees going down, we were shocked and horrified. Developers maximized the square footage of the houses, clear-cut the properties, disrespected the unique nature of the Quome's area. The developers were not interested in the community, they were interested in profit. We, as a neighborhood and a community, feel that a few developers should not determine what our community looks like. They should not take away the uniqueness of our little community. If we don't save this small area, we're at risk of creating canyons of mega homes where soaring rooftops, not trees, dominate the landscape. We have voted in favor of this proposal as a community. And if the developers say that homeowners will not be able to sell their properties and property values will go down, they are misinformed. I have spoken to a few real estate agents and they have assured me that our modest proposal to go to the previous zoning for our small area, homes will always sell at or above market value, especially given the uniqueness of our area. We have done our best in our proposal to be reasonable, to allow homes to be built that are modern, comfortable, and appropriate, given the small lot sizes in our area. Given the historical significance of Quome Point Park, its natural beauty and wildlife, and the wonderful village community, we're asking the council to finish what they started by recognizing the importance of Quome Park to the community and pass the new zoning. Keep what is special of the area to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I have no one else signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next bylaw.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18518. The address is 2332 160th Street. The applicant is C P R E I T B C Properties Limited. The applicant seeking to amend Comprehensive Development bylaw 15611 in order to allow for an automotive service use that is not associated with a retail store. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum easterly yard, side yard setback from 13.5 meters to 5.4 meters for Building 5 and to 11.2 meters for the southeast portion of Building 6.
I have no one signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the second bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. Madam Clerk, next bylaw.
Next bylaw is zoning amendment bylaw 18523. The address is 16543 20th Avenue. The applicant's Double Dot Investment Group. The applicant seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential 12. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into 62 single-family small lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to allow front access double garages on proposed lots 156 and 59, to reduce the lot width on proposed lots 8 and 21, increase the front yard setback for proposed lots 50 to 55 and 60 to 62, increase the southerly side yard setback for proposed lots 57 and 58, and reduce the setbacks, increase the size of the second story for the proposed lot 36.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? Yes, sir? Please come forward.
Mayor Hepner, Surrey council members. My name is Andrew Pache. I live at 1915 165 A Street, which is just south of the proposed new development. I am opposed to this proposed rezoning amendment for the following reasons. 20th Avenue is a small country road without sidewalks west of 168th to Croydon Drive. Many people use 20th Avenue for walking, bicycling, and jogging. There are two blind hills on this avenue when traveling east from 164th to 167th Street. To put more traffic onto 20th Avenue would endanger them further. There is also no overpass over 99 Highway for 20th Avenue. 164th Avenue has been closed at 16th Avenue. So I fear this development of 62 new homes will increase traffic down our quiet 165 A Street. Drivers would be using our street as a through road to get to 16th Avenue and then across the 99 Highway. Our street also does not have any sidewalks, any lighting, and is home to many children who walk or play near or on the street. Furthermore, westbound traffic on 24th Avenue, which is north of this, is already jammed up at 160th Street, at 156th Street, and at King George Boulevard. Frequently, when traveling west, the traffic is backed up all the way to, on 24th Avenue, all the way to 160th. Conclusion, I'd like to say this increased density should not go through until 20th Avenue is widened with a bicycle lane perhaps, sidewalks, lighting, and all the way from 168th through the Croydon Drive. And also until an overpass is built over 99 Highway. And also until an overpass is built over 99 Highway on 20th Avenue. Have a position signed with 24 residents from our 165A Street in area who are also opposed to this proposed amendment. Respectfully submitted, Andrew Pache.
Thank you very much. I have a question, Councilor Villanue.
Madam Mayor, through you to staff, and the question of 20th Avenue, with this project, is there upgrading of 20th Avenue? Just know with most development projects, there's usually upgrading of the roads and sidewalks, et cetera, so possibly that would be informative for people that are here.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This project is responsible to upgrade furniture on 20th Avenue, furniture of their own site. There is development potential east and west along 20th Avenue, and as development progresses, the upgrades will be delivered.
So the 20th Avenue will be upgraded to carry more traffic, is that what you're saying? Or just the...
That's correct. Through future development of the sites east and west of the subject property.
Thank you.
Dedication is provided and construction, sidewalks, lighting, and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw number three? First call, second call, third and final call. Next bylaw, Madam Clerk, number four.
Zoning amendment bylaw 18517. The address is 10843 157th Street. Robbie, Billy, and Jasvir Singh, Daljit, Gervinder, and Hani Gilr, the applicants. They are seeking to rezone the property from 1-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicants are proposing to subdivide into six single-family residential lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum north side yard setback in order to construct a standard-sized home on proposed lots 4.
I have no one signed up. I have three people signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Starting off with Laura, looks like Levine, Laura Levine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak to this proposal. I'm opposed mainly because that property contains at least 50 bylaw-protected trees, many of which run along my property, right on the property line. And the current proposal, they're requesting to keep nine of the 50. I find it disheartening to see Surrey being cut down. All these beautiful properties that have very old trees and all the wildlife they contain and clearcutting, I think, needs to stop. There needs to be some measures taken to save some of these trees. So that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Dell. Oh, that's a hard one. Zelizny.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I reside at 10821 157th Street. The trees that Laura mentioned are along the property line, and out of these 50 trees that they're cutting down, 30 are Douglas cedar, or Western red cedar, beautiful trees. Understand progress, we need it, but right along, it's not just our property line, the nine that they're keeping are the front and back of our property, but they want to take out two others that are probably two of the, not the largest, but they're beautiful trees like the other nine are. And I don't understand why by this little jut out in this one layout of this home, I don't have a detailed layout, and the protected area runs right into that. If he just moved that over one and a half meters, that would clear those two trees to be saved.
Maybe I could have just asked the planner to pull up a lot description here. Okay, sir, I'm sorry, do you want to define for council which trees you're talking about?
See that on the right, there's five green spots there?
Yes.
And then on the left, there's four, the two in the middle, the Xed-out ones, the red X in them, at the bottom of the property, south side of the property.
Yes, J15 and 16.
316, 315, is it?
J, or maybe...
Yeah, J15, yes. So I don't understand, when you look at the layout of the house on that little bump out, they're saying they have to be taken out. I just don't see that. I've worked construction for many years. All they need to do is move that wall up, and I know it's not a foundation, it's just a pad. And it'd be beautiful, they could save that whole light of those nine trees. I just don't understand the reasoning to remove those two beautiful trees.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We'll make sure we take that into consideration.
Appreciate your time, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. And I have, looks like from the same address, Jackie Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do live in the same address, and if those two trees, 15 and 16, were removed, it would greatly impact the amount of privacy that we have, as well as the birds that live up there, and we get a lot of enjoyment at our property from feeding the birds and all of that kind of stuff. So we're just here to try and save those two trees, as well as the other ones that are already slotted for saving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no one else signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? First call, second call, third and final call. You, sir, will be the last speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Malcolm McNauton. I am the senior planner with Appleton and Martin, and I represent the applicant on this matter. Just a little background, originally, along that south property line, all of those trees were slated to be removed in order to allow for a storm drainage line, not only for this property, but for all of the properties totaling 16 lots that are serviced on the cul-de-sac that you see there, as well as further to the west. And so we've come up with an engineering solution that allows us to move that storm drainage line to the next property line to the north and to save those trees. And what's not shown very well on this tree diagram is the root protection zone for 315 and 316 is quite large. You've got an area there on the other diagram that was shown where, yes, it's shown as a potential bump out, that's the potential area for building. The root protection zones would actually go back into that buildable area quite a bit. And so the 315 tree, I believe it is, is also a marginal tree. And so it was determined that because of the building pad issue and also the marginal tree, that it would be best to remove those two trees. We've additionally asked for a variance to move the building as far to the north proper line as possible, reducing the setback to 1.2 meters from 1.8. And we've also worked with the engineering department to reduce the required right-of-way for that storm line from 5 meters to 3 meters there. So we've done quite a bit of work to try and save as much as we can along there, and we've done, I think, a very good job of it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to go further.
I see no questions, sir. Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, bylaw number five.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18398. The address is 9061 164th Street. Mandip and Surrender Bing are the applicants, and they are seeking to rezone the property from 1-acre residential to half-acre residential. The applicant's proposing to subdivide into two half-acre residential lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum lot width and side yard setbacks in order to construct standard-sized homes on the proposed lots.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have eight people signed up in support of this bylaw, one against, and I have two persons wishing to speak. First one is Irene Schreiber, Cybor.
Good evening, Mayor Hepner and councilors. The property in question is property which backs onto our home and partially with that of our neighbor to our right. This property is a buffer zone between the agricultural and urban properties. When we purchased our property 20 years ago, and most of us in that cul-de-sac are original owners, so we've been there for 20 years, we understood that the 1-acre properties would remain that size because they are a buffer zone. And I understand that it is 20 years later, and Surrey has undergone many changes, but the integrity of this small area needs to be maintained. By dividing this property in half does not maintain the frontage size of properties in the area, and the variance that is being applied for to reduce the minimum lot width and side yard setbacks to construct two homes is not acceptable for our community. Therefore, I strongly oppose to the zoning request.
Thank you very much, Irene, for your comments. I have a question, Councilor Gill.
If she could just come back for one moment. If I recall correctly through staff, that this same application was before us several months back, and if I recall correctly, there was a panhandle solution at that time. Given the concerns from the community, this was sent back to staff, and we're going through the second cycle of public hearing now, with the lots now being subdivided in half from the frontage, correct?
Yes.
So the question I have for you, ma'am, is the solution that we have before you today, is that a better solution than what was before you with the panhandle lot?
Definitely not.
Thank you.
These are two very narrow lots, very long lots, with houses close together because they're asking for a variance.
So your preference would have been for...
My preference is to have these lots remain 1-acre lots. I have no problem with a home being built on the 1-acre lot.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Robert Sammis. Next up. Same address, sir?
Yes, same address.
Thank you.
I'm a resident on the western boundary, the one that most straddles the western boundary of the subject property. If I could just further add to Irene's concerns about the property, I would like to focus in on the city's own policy on residential buffering adjacent to the ALR agricultural boundaries, publicly available through the city's own web portal. And it states here that within the transition area, a line at a distance of 200 meters from the agricultural land reserve or the agricultural designation boundary defines two sub-transition areas, an inner-ring transition area between the existing urban designation boundary and the 200-meter line, and an outer-ring transition area between the 200-meter line and the ALR agricultural boundary. And if I could focus in on Section C of this city's policy, and I realize it's not a bylaw, but it is a city's policy drafted back in 1990. Section C expressly states that within the outer-ring transition area, half-acre subdivisions, including gross-density development, may be allowed, provided that at least one row of 1-acre lots should be created immediately adjacent to the ALR boundary. And as I understand it, the subdivision to the west of the subject property are the half-acre gross-density properties referred to here in this policy. This is dated November 5, 1990. The subdivision built there to the west of the subject was created between 1993 and And I do oppose the proposal.
Thank you.
And I understand this is the second time that we're here for a similar...
I'll just ask through the planner, comments from the planning department with respect to the ALR boundary, because my information on this report says this subdivision will in fact enhance that boundary. Could you explain that, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the proposed subdivision is proposing an ALR buffer. That's 25 feet in width along 164th Street, so through that subdivision, we would get that additional landscaping and buffering to the ALR.
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
Okay, thank you, sir. I have no one else wishing to speak to this bylaw. First call, second call, third and... You, sir, are the last speaker.
Good evening. Mike Keller, Coastland Engineering, representing the client, owner of the property. Just like to reiterate a few statements that are in the council package. This application complies with the suburban policies of the OCP. It complies with the Farm Protection Development Permit Guideline in the OCP. We provide for transition lot from a half-acre gross-density to the west, with farmland to the east. We are providing a 12-meter buffer, very standard for this type of scenario. The developer has also volunteered to do additional setback from the rear yard from 7 and 1/2 meters to 25 meters. He's tripling the rear yard setback to provide a break to the neighbors up in behind. And I want to comment that the neighbors in behind, their houses are substantially higher than this land. At the front of our property on 164th Street to the back, we almost have a 12-meter climb. So any house that we're going to construct, which will be at the front, because of grades, really the peak of that roof wouldn't be visible from those houses if you looked straight across. As far as tree retention is concerned, we're saving 72% of the trees on this property, a phenomenal amount of trees. And that's all comments I have.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Well, the other, Madam Clerk, to bylaw number six. Zoning amendment bylaw 18521. The address is 16434 Fraser Highway. The applicant is Anthem 16434 Fraser Developments Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the property from 1-acre residential to multiple residential 30. The applicant's proposing to develop approximately 73 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum south rear yard, east and west side yard setbacks in order to create a pedestrian-friendly streetscape. I don't have anyone signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number six? First call, second call, third... Speaking to this bylaw, sir?
Good evening. My name is Rick Hart, president of the Fleetwood Community Association. I'm a mayor, council. Really pleased to be here this evening to speak to this. This particular triangle, as the report says, has been very difficult for as long as I've been in Fleetwood, probably 25 years, between 164th and 168th. And this, along with another development that was approved back late, early summer, actually is going to start to promote the aspect of supporting the transit orientated corridor. And of course, with some political announcements this morning, I think hopefully Fleetwood is going to contribute to that. Certainly, the proponent, Anthem Properties, have been a great partner, I think, for the city, as well as certainly Fleetwood. They just recently completed, after about four or five years, the property at 162nd and Fraser Highway called The Rockwoods. And I had the pleasure to talk to the people who actually are living there, and they're very happy with the product that's there and also the evolving Fleetwood area. The other thing that I'd like to commend staff with in regards to, as many of you know me, is the fact that they're going to name this one road, which is sort of, was called E1A to Watson Drive, heritage aspect to it, so we'll parlay that as well into the future town center plan. The other thing that I've been a big proponent for as long as I can remember, and that is the fact of tenant parking, and the fact that I have to give accolades to this particular project, they are a higher... And the fact that I have to give accolades to this particular project, they are a 100% side-by-side, no tandems, so I would like to tip my hat off to Anthem for doing that. The other thing that this property will do is that there is another in line, about three properties over that Anthem has, that will come forward, and they're basically beside a townhouse complex that was built in 2005. That's how long it's taken to do any development here. And then hopefully with that and another development on the east side of the existing townhouse, 166, that this area will be opened up, as well as we have a park that's just south of this bigger one, that basically is a dormant park. It was developed with anticipation, developed what happened. And so hopefully with this, we'll also be able to be a much more safer community by opening this park up. There's one thing that's always challenging for us to speak to coming from the community, and that is regards to the aspect of E1A in Watson, that's in the report. And I would basically refer to the fact that there's an existing house that needs to be acquired to widen the road up. I hope that through council and through engineering staff, that when they negotiate with the developer in regards to any compensation, that it's fair and equitable. One of the reasons I bring that subject up is regards to maybe a slip-up in the system, which is, you know, what happens from time to time. We learn from our mistakes, that a brand-new house was built on that property, knowing that the fact that the Town Center Plan, that there actually was a road destined for that, but the house is only a couple of years old, but a permit was given to build the house. So I'm hoping the fact that through this exercise is that there is a fair echo with our partners in our community, and which I consider obviously the city who oversees it for us, and the staff, and certainly developers have come back again that we've had great success with.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Councillor Gill has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. A quick, just out of curiosity, when looking at Watson Drive and the corner of 164th Street, given that Watson Drive now is a half-road, are you concerned, or has the association expressed any concerns with that half-road being there for the interim or foreseeable future until the other portions can be acquired? So will that work, given the density that we're talking about within the proposed development?
I don't think, no, I mean, being a half-road, again, I think that over time, depending on what happens here, because right now, if you take a look at the land, this one has to have a half-road, or at least a road, out to 164, because they can't go to the east, because that property is under any type of development application at this time. But eventually, when it does, you know, they can either go to 164, or eventually to the new, hopefully, the 166th Street, which basically right now, so the 166th Street extension, which was negotiated over the summertime to assemble land to the, to the east. So my commentary, basically, Councillor Gill, half-road is fine. The only thing is, I believe, that engineering have a different comment in regards to the report. It's more the fact of that house that got built a few years ago probably shouldn't have been built, and the fact that, you know, it happens. But I guess, more than anything, the equitable in regards to how that property is obtained financially.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers for bylaw number six? Final call. Madam Clerk, bylaw number seven.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18515. The address is 7093 King George Boulevard. The applicant is Newton Square Properties Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from comprehensive development to community commercial. The applicant is proposing to remove the gaming facility use, which permits slot machine gaming. The existing bingo hall use is still permitted under the proposed zone as an indoor recreational facility use.
I have no one signed up wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number seven? Removal of the gaming license in Newton. First call, second call, third and final call. Madam Clerk, next bylaw, number eight.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18522. The address is 14021 and 14047 60th Avenue. The applicants are Bradley and Heather Mikulowski, and Amandip and Jasdeep Sandhu, Mandip and Jagdish Dura. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to semi-detached residential and multiple residential 23. The applicant's proposing to develop 10 duplexes, six-row houses, for a total of 26 units.
Again, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the bylaw? First call? You, sir? Second call? This, okay, you, sir, are the only speaker.
My name is Bill Hennessy, a mayor and council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I live at 6077 140th Street, which is just diagonally opposite the intersection bordering this property. This area is on the north slope of Panorama Ridge, looking towards the mountains, and it's a very steep slope. And we've learned this new architectural style that's showing up recently, that has very high individual floors, and then above that, very, very high roofs. So the total height of the house is now approaching equivalent to a four-story apartment building. And the houses that have been built immediately north of us are now blocking our mountain view. We just weren't aware of this style. We didn't comment about it when the proposal came through. So when this proposal came through, which is just immediately east and south of us, we're concerned that the possible height of these buildings could actually put us in the shade in the mornings, because of the steep slope on the north side, the sun's very, very low in the sky. So we had written, when we saw the notice about this development, and we were told that they would limit the roof slope to 12 and 12, and that's certainly advantageous for us to do that. We'd also like to make sure that the overall height of the house isn't such that it's going to cast large shadows for neighbors around us. As well, this doesn't fit the zoning in that they're allowing row houses where duplexes is normally the maximum allowed, that area. So I'm just putting the comment that should our acre in the future be developed, we would like to have council consider the same possibility for, for other subdivision, for other lots in this area.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. And through Mr. City Planner, have we got those identified in terms of the height restrictions that the, the roof pitch?
Sorry, the roof pitch is capped at 12/12.
Thank you. Okay, sir. Seems to be that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mike Comter, I'm the consultant on the project. I just wanted to clarify, the speaker commented on four-story buildings. These buildings from 60th Avenue are strictly two-story buildings, so it's not a four-story complex that was...
So the gentleman will not have a shadow problem?
No, no, they're, from, from the street, they're two-story. It slopes to the north. I believe he's on the southwest corner.
Southeast.
Southeast corner. Unfortunately, these drawings aren't very clear, but if you look at the drawing that shows 60th Avenue frontage, would be, would be one of those. You can see they're two-story buildings. In fact, the roof height is being lowered from the maximum nine meters to eight meters as well, so will be less than the zoning bylaw allows for roof height.
Thank you for your clarification.
Just wanted to clarify that, council. Thank you.
Councillor Villanue.
Thank you. I just want to clarify with you as well that there is no secondary suite in the duplexes. Is that correct?
That is correct. Under the zoning bylaw, secondary suites are not, I understand secondary suites are not permitted under the duplex zone.
And so the design is not going to accommodate that, is that correct?
No, no, the developer has no intention of incorporating secondary suites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number eight? Going to close it off. Final call. Madam Clerk, bylaw number nine, please.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18514. The address is 1881 072nd Avenue. The applicant is Plaza 188 Holdings Limited. The applicant seeking to amend Comprehensive Development Bylaw 17377 in order to permit a licensee retail store, a private liquor store, in a proposed commercial building.
I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number nine? First call, second call, third and final call? Bylaw number 10, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18516. The address is 7071 193rd Street. The applicant is Pavitheer and Napjot Sikum. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential and single-family residential 12. Applicant is proposing to subdivide into six single-family lots.
And again, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number 10? First call, second call, third and final call? Bylaw number 11, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18519. The address is 19436 71st Avenue and 7019 194A Street. The applicant is Clayton 21 Land Corporation. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential 10 and single-family residential 12. The applicant is proposing to develop 21 single-family lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum lot width for proposed lots 17 through 20 from 12 meters to 11.8 meters.
I have no one signed up to speak to bylaw number 11. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call? Seeing no one, bylaw number 12, Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18520. The address is 7050 192nd Street. The applicant is 1003849 B.C. Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to multiple residential 30. The applicant's proposing to develop approximately 23 townhouse units. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum front, south, side yard, and rear yard setbacks.
There is no one signed up to speak to bylaw number 12. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call? That concludes the bylaw, the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you. Moving into committee reports. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Move the Diversity Advisory Committee in minutes of May 19. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Number two is out of order. Number three, Public Art.
I'll move, is the Cultural Development Advisory Committee out of order?
Yes.
Okay. Turned table. So, sorry, I missed that. And I'll move the minutes to the Public Arts Advisory Committee, July 17.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received for TIC, July 24.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes for the Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission of the 22nd of July be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move recommendations be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. I have several proclamations. It's a busy fall, so please bear with me, council, as I read them. The first one is Community Living Month, whereas Community Living Month celebrates the achievements of people with developmental disabilities, including independent living, workplace accomplishments, and community and social participation. And whereas the City of Surrey, in partnership with Community Living B.C., Melu Family Services, Measuring Up Rotary Club of Surrey, Rotary at Work B.C. and Work B.C. Employment Services Centre will be holding a public event at Eagle Quest Coyote Creek in Surrey on October the 1st to celebrate the inclusive employers and to recognize them for creating an inclusive workplace. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 2015 as Community Living Month in the City of Surrey. Manufacturing Month, whereas manufacturing makes a significant contribution to British Columbia's economy and the prosperity of citizens. And whereas Surrey is home to over 300 manufacturers, with many leading innovation in sectors such as fabricated metal products, food manufacturing, and machinery. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 2015 shall be known as Manufacturing Month in the City of Surrey. World Mental Health Day, October 10, 2015. Whereas over 450 million individuals around the world are living with mental illness that could benefit from early diagnosis and appropriate treatment and support. And whereas communities, businesses, and organizations across Canada have committed to working together to raise awareness of these issues, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 10, 2015 as World Mental Health Day in the City of Surrey. B.C. Co-op Week, October 11 through 17. Whereas cooperative associations are democratic, member-owned organizations that allow individuals to cooperate in providing services to their communities. And whereas cooperative associations are an original and powerful form of social enterprise, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 11 through 17 as B.C. Co-op Week in the City of Surrey. Homelessness Action Week, October 11 through 17. Whereas every day in our municipality, there are men, women, seniors, youth, and children who do not have a place to call home. And whereas community action and participation are essential in addressing and eliminating issues and circumstances that contribute to homelessness. And whereas during this week, activities and events will be offered, and the community will be encouraged to learn about the many issues related to homelessness. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 11 through 17 as Homelessness Action Week in the City of Surrey, and encourage all citizens to recognize and support efforts to put an end to homelessness in our community. Waste Reduction Week, October 19 through 25. Whereas the City of Surrey is committed to conserving resources, protecting the environment, and educating the community. And whereas the City of Surrey recognizes the generation of solid waste and the needless waste of water and energy resources as global environmental problems, and endeavors to take the lead in our community towards environmental sustainability. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 19 through 25 as Waste Reduction Week in the City of Surrey. National Seniors Day, October 1. Whereas National Seniors Day is an occasion for all citizens to appreciate and to celebrate seniors. And whereas National Seniors Day is an occasion for people in and across Canada to join together as a nation, honoring and celebrating this country's seniors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare October 1 as National Seniors Day in the City of Surrey. Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, September. Only a couple more days to recognize this one. Whereas prostate cancer is the most common cancer to affect Canadian men. And whereas 1.8 Canadian men will be diagnosed with the disease in his lifetime, and an estimated 24,000 Canadian men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year. Now therefore, I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Surrey. That is it. Thank you for that. I'm sorry. Moving on to governmental reports. Councillor Hain from the UBCM. First of all, congratulations on being appointed a director of the UBCM. I'm glad you're going to be at that table, spreading all sorts of messages around urban centers. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Madam Mayor. And yes, several of us were at the UBCM, the Union of B.C. Municipalities Conference, last week in Vancouver. And this is the coming together of all councils and mayors across the province. And this is the coming together of all councils and mayors across the province that gives us an opportunity to meet with one another, to talk to government officials, and certainly meet with cabinet ministers and so on. And Surrey has traditionally done very, very well at this conference in terms of recognition and awards. We, year after year, have been recognized for winning an award, at least one award. And this year was no exception. In fact, we won two community leadership awards, Madam Mayor. The first one for our program on replacement of copper wire in streetlights. And that's a program where we were seeing sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars a year of copper wire being stolen from our streetlights. And staff took it upon themselves to start an initiative to replace the copper wire with an aluminum compound wire that doesn't have the same kind of value on the street, if you will, as copper does. And it gave us a chance that if somebody's going to sell our copper wire, it might as well be us. So we were recognized for that. And secondly, we were recognized in the community leadership award for our Smart Surrey apps, our My Surrey app and My Surrey Request app, which are mobile apps that you can use. The My Surrey Request app is a terrific app that you can use. Snap a picture of something, a pothole, a streetlight out, some graffiti, something like that. It geo-tagged it. In other words, it puts a tag onto the picture of exactly what the coordinates of where that picture was taken. You can add a comment and just hit send. It goes into the appropriate department. So we were recognized for that. It was really leadership. And it really is a testament to staff because colleagues come up to us from all different municipalities saying, wow, you guys in Surrey, you're doing this, you're doing that. And they're excited and they want to hear more about what we're doing. And quite frankly, that's very gratifying. And yes, it starts with leadership, but it really is a testament to staff and what our staff does for us, day in, day out, week in, week out. And not to spend too much time, but we won a third award, and this one I'm very pleased with. It's the Open for Business Awards. And this one was awarded to us for our work with small business. For our business outreach program, we've visited over 700 businesses throughout the city in the past couple of years. For our mobile business licensing, we participated and took a leadership role in that, so that tradespeople that are working in various municipalities can just get one license, and it's good in a variety of different municipalities, as well as ongoing online business license renewals and so on. So we are recognized for our work with small business, and certainly small business is the economic engine of our city, so I'm very pleased to have received that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councillor Hain. Councillor Starczuk?
Yeah, I want to echo what Councillor Hain said with regards to staff and the work that they do and the leadership of previous council. As a new councillor, I really can't hold this award in front of me without taking any credit right now. But it is a community award of merit to the city for its work with the B.C. wood industry and the actual ability to use wood and the structure that we're in tonight. So while Councillor Hain has three little teeny tiny things that are up there, I'd like to point out, size does matter. Anyways, if you have the time, take a look at this. It's a gorgeous looking plaque.
That was for utilization of wood in our new city hall. Thank you. And I think, just to echo what the councillors have said, it is, I'm always so proud to go to that conference and hear what other communities are saying relative to the work that is being done in Surrey, and that is in no small measure to the great efforts of staff. So I thank you very much. You're the ones who have made it possible that we receive these awards each and every year. And thank you to the councillors who got up and attended that breakfast at 6:30 a.m. Moving on, corporate reports.
Move Corporate Part R 189, Section 220 and Section 224, Item 2 F and H, Churches, Private Schools, and Pre-1974 Care Facilities.
Second. Property tax exemptions. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Move Corporate Part R 190, Permissive Property Tax Exemptions for Tax Year 2016 for Select Not-for-Profit Societies and Licensed Community Care Facilities.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move Corporate Part R 191, Permissive Property Tax Exemptions for Tax Year 2016 for Properties Leased for the Purpose of Public Worship pursuant to Section 224.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And move Corporate Part R 192, Permissive Property Tax Exemption for Tax Year 2016 for Heritage Properties that are eligible under Section 225 of the Community Charter.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We've dealt with 193.
Move Corporate Part R 194, Transfer to the Surrey City Development Corporation of Beneficial Interest in City-Owned Property of Campbellites, North Lot Number 51911840 Avenue.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move Corporate Part R 195, Amelie Action Requirement Related to Structure Located at 2809152 Street.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move Corporate Part R 196, Avenue Change, Guilford West, Update.
Second. Councillor Villanueva, did you wish to speak to this?
I do. Just quickly, this is an update, and I think it's a very good outline of the work that's been done with our partnership, United Way, on the Guilford West project. And we did have a presentation in council and committee to you, council, on this project, but the city has invested over $400,000 over the next five years to partner with United Way and a number of other partners in the community, including Fraser Health and the Surrey Libraries, School Districts, and Options is taking a lead role as a nonprofit organization on this project, which is really designed to look at a quite vulnerable neighborhood and what steps can be taken to give support to families in a neighborhood so that their children are ready to enter the school system with all of the tools that they need. And I think this project is very important because I do believe United Way is interested in supporting Surrey families. And I think this might be a very good model project that can be translated to other communities in the Surrey that might need assistance, other neighborhoods. So I'm really looking forward to, first of all, thanking the partners on this project, but also the outcome, because I think it will help us design some programs in some of our more vulnerable neighborhoods in the city and to use the best tools possible to ensure that we can try and break the cycle of poverty, but more importantly, give young people an opportunity to have a hope in their future and success. So I'm really pleased about this project.
Thanks for that, Councillor Villanueva. I think that that goes without saying that this is actually coming out of the Smarter Cities Initiative, too, that it's a collection of agencies working together, and I think it's going to be a really good model and one that the United Way is very excited about moving beyond Surrey. So thank you for that. Call the question, R 196. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. R 197?
Move Corporate Part R 197, Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission Legacy Book Project.
Second. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor, I just would like to point out and say here that, of course, that 2017 is Canada's 150th anniversary, and the commission is going to undertake a pretty ambitious project, and that's to collectively put together a book with regards to the history of the City of Surrey. That, there's no book that's in current publication that relates to it. So the commission is authorized taking $40,000 of the unrestricted funds from the commission, and it's going to be seeking the rest of the project funding in the 2016 budget. So it's a pretty ambitious project, but I think it's well worth it, and I'm hoping that the council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Woods. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And finally, move Corporate Part R 198, Surrey Urban Aboriginal Social Innovation Strategy.
Second. Yes, we had a good presentation on this early in the evening before we started public hearing, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'll move the third reading on number one underneath.
Second.
For the Ocean Park Comprehensive Development Zone.
My old neighborhood. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And I'll move final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on two.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move council support the issuance of a DVP 7915016400 on final adoption of the new bylaw.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on three.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Council support.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question to staff. What is currently taking place on 20th Avenue as you come around the bend in front of Walmart? Well, it's east of there, but not east. It's north of there. It runs along Highway 99. What exactly, is that widening the road, or do we know?
Is this related to this project? 20th Avenue?
Could we perhaps bring it up on Cosmos so we know exactly where?
Yeah.
I might be able to help you out.
Put it up. Put it up on the screen.
Can you switch it on?
Thank you. All right. So we have 20.
Are we ready at Croydon? Is that the location?
That's exactly correct. Yes.
Croydon at 20th?
20th.
Down lower?
Down lower.
South of there?
Lower.
No. Move. You were there, just.
Got it. Had to go south.
South. Can you move this? Move the image north. Move it north. No. Other way.
No, the other way. Other way.
Your other up. South of there. Further south. Further south. There we go. Right there.
There, that's right.
So I've seen a number of construction vehicles in that area just in the past few days, and I just wondered, is that widening of that strip in order for traffic to go on to 20th? Or?
At this point, we have no capital works happening in that area. There might be a sewer extension, but I think that would have been done previously. We can look into that and get back to you.
Because the City of Surrey truck that's there?
Yeah, it might be maintenance, maybe maintenance on the storm sewers and culverts in the area. We'll look into that.
I'd just be interested to see if that was being widened and in the eventuality, the 20th Avenue would be widened.
It would not be done at this point in time.
Okay.
It's more likely maintenance in the area going on if it's a city truck.
Okay.
We'll look into that and give you an amendment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Pliner. I'm going to call the question on third. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? DVP?
Move DVP 791202900 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on four.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on five.
Second. Second. Councillor Hain. I could, it's on the floor. Councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just wanted to make a comment on this because I know this came before us previously with panhandles. And it was my understanding that it came forward with a design of panhandles at the time, not because anybody really likes panhandles, but because they were trying to open it up for other lots to the south of the subject property, was my understanding, for future development. And so it was in deference to other owners along that strip. And at that time, I remember at that public hearing that there was significant opposition from neighbors behind because they felt that there would be two houses and one house very close to their property and that sort of thing. Those were the comments that I heard back at that meeting. And so the applicant went back and then worked with staff to come up with just a straight two-lot split, which they could have done the first time, in half-acre lots. And these are half-acre lots behind, and they're proposing half-acre lots now with a buffer. So I'm very supportive of this, and I just wanted to comment that the applicant was very accommodating, trying to support the neighbors around them while they were doing that. So I'm going to be supporting this.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also will be supporting this application, but particularly, I was concerned with the panhandle lot presentation in the last public hearing, and I'm really thrilled, and I think this is a much better opportunity for the neighborhood, just given the folks that did come out today, because I do recall that there was significant opposition. So that being said, I will be supporting this application tonight.
Okay, I'm going to call the question on third. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Also on five, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7914016800 on final adoption.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on six.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On six, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7915005200 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Second. This is on the elimination of the gaming in Newton. Councillor Villanueva?
Well, I totally support this bylaw, and I'd just like to make a comment that the applicant on this proposal, in my opinion, should be informed that they should do something about making that site more attractive. As it sits there, whatever they're going to do with it, waiting for redevelopment, it's now boarded up, at least to paint the boards, to do something that makes that site more attractive for the community as a whole. And I don't really want to name their names now, but there's certainly an applicant that's capable of doing some beautification on that site. And I think, as a council, I think we should send a strong message to them to be more community responsible.
I think we've asked staff to speak to them relative to participating in a cultural corridor or utilizing that site in some other way, because I agree with you, boarded up is not the way to go.
Right, Miss.
Yep. Thank you for that. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third on eight.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Number 11.
Move third on 11.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 11, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7915005100 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Move third reading on 12.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 12, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7914027800 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
On 11, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7915005100 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Councillor Woods, did you push your button to speak so I can see you here on the screen?
Okay, I can see that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm concerned with regards to this application, and I note with interest the report from staff on it, and in particular, I note the disadvantages of the proposed bylaw amendment, specifically with the fact that this store would be within 400 meters of, particularly to High School, Clayton High School. I'd like to know from staff, is there other areas in the city where this bylaw has been amended or been overruled?
I think that...
Madam Mayor, there are other instances in Surrey where you do have liquor license retail store establishment closer than 400 meters to a school.
To a high school?
Yes.
There are?
Yep.
Yeah. Fraser.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I am going to be opposing it. I don't agree with it at all.
I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed?
Opposed.
That is carried. Thank you.
Move Final on Nine.
Second. All those in favor, opposed?
Opposed.
Carried.
Move Third, Third on Ten.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried, number 11.
Move Third on 11.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 11, move that Council support the issuance of a DVP 7915005100 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third Reading on 12.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 12, move that Council support the issuance of a DVP 7914027800 on final adoption.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 13, move the DVP 7914030300 be approved.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 14, move the Development Varyance Permit 7915021500 be approved.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 15, move DVP 7915017900 be approved.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 16, move DVP 7915025700.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move DVP 7915029100.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 18, move DVP 7915017100.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 19, move DVP 7915018400.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 20, move DVP 791501400.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 21, move that Council support the issuance of a DVP 7915021600 in conjunction to the final approval of associated DP.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 22, move that Council support the issuance of a DVP 7915022400 in conjunction with the final approval of the associated development permit.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 23, move that Council support the issuance of a DVP 7915023700 in conjunction with final approval.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Final Adoption on 24.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Anyone wishing to make a representation on bylaw 25, which is a close and remove the dedication of a highway portion of Row 156851068 Avenue? First call, second call, third, final call?
Move Final Adoption on 25.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Final Adoption on 26.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Final Adoption on 27.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Final Adoption 28.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Introductions?
On 29, move Introduction.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Public hearing reset, Rockford, 20th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 30, move Introduction.
Please note for the public that October 20th is a Tuesday for these particular bylaws, not a Monday. Monday is the federal election and we will be holding our council meeting on Tuesday.
On 30, move Introduction on 30.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Public hearing reset for October 20th.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 31, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 32, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 33, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 34, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 35, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 36, move First.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And just for the public's acknowledgement or understanding, those were all tax exemption bylaws for various properties in the city. Number 37?
On 37, move that Council rescind Resolution R15-1615 on September 14, Regent Council Public.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move that Council amend bylaw, Number 18412 in Section 18, Schedule A.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Council request to pass Third Reading is amended.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And also on 37, move Final Adoption.